Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out to our board meeting this evening. We want to remind everyone of specific decorum in case this is your first time here. And I want to thank those who are returning for all of your community leadership in actually modeling these behaviors. We do appreciate keeping this a very welcoming environment in our boardroom. So for decorum, no person shall disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Prohibited disruptive behavior includes, but is not limited to making disruptive noises, noises such as boos or hisses, creating or participating in a physical disturbance, speaking out of turn in violation of the applicable rules, preventing or attempting to prevent others who have the floor from speaking, preventing others from observing the meeting, entering into or remaining in the area of the meeting room that is not open to the public or approaching the dais without permission. I also want to thank all of you for remembering that, yes, this is a school board meeting. And so there are people watching from home with their children there. And so just want to remind everyone to please use appropriate language during your public comment period. I'd like to officially call the meeting to order at 7:15. Ms. Shires, can you call the roll?
Student Director Janai Dale, Student Director Caitlin Liao, Director Jennifer Shinoski, Director Mike Sheng,
Oh, here.
Director Kritija Brown,
Present.
Vice President Anna Vasudev,
Present.
President Laura Babbitt.
Here. Thank you. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda, understanding that item eight has been removed from the agenda, but we will be hearing from students in the more of a public comment field. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. So now we will have our report out from closed session from November 1st, followed by the report out of closed session from November 15th.
Just for clarity, President Babbitt, are we only reporting when we recess to back? Yeah, got it. The Board of Education on November 1st heard item 3.4, collective bargaining. The board heard an update and provided direction. And that concludes the report back from closed session on November 1st. Do you want me to report today's closed session? All right, for today's closed session, closed session was called to order at 5:43 PM. All directors were present except for Director Brown, who joined the meeting at 5:46 PM. The board heard item 3.1.1, there was a motion to approve the settlement agreement that was made by Vice President Vasudev, seconded by Director Shinoski. All directors voted in favor, except for Director Brown, who was in absentia. Item 3.1.2, there was a motion to approve the amended agreement made by Vice President Vasudev, seconded by Director Shinoski. All directors voted in favor. For item 3.2, consideration of student expulsion, there was a motion to approve the stipulated agreement made by Vice President Vasudev, seconded by Director Shinoski. All directors voted in favor. Director Shinoski asked for additional contextual information. For item 3.3, collective bargaining, the Board of Education heard an update. And that concludes the report out from closed session.
Thank you. Now we will have our superintendent's comments.
Good evening, BUSD family. This week, BUSD joined Not in Our Town, the California Civil Rights Department, the City of Berkeley, the mayor's office, and LA versus Hate, along with community and government partners from across the state to kick off United Against Hate Week, a collaborative effort to galvanize a movement to stop the hate that threatens our multiple communities. The week began with a press conference where, among other things, participants learned about a statewide hotline for reporting hate incidents and receiving support after such incidents. California versus Hate is a non-emergency hate incident and hate crime reporting system to support individuals and communities targeted for hate. California versus Hate has developed a resource line and a network. Hate crimes report can be made online at any time in 15 languages. People also can report an incident by calling 833-866-4283 or 833-8nohate, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and can talk to a trained civil rights agent in over 200 languages. I also want to remind the public that at our last board meeting, we did share an email with you to be able to share incidents of hate that happens on our campus as well. What I can say about the event this week, the events this week, is that it has been such an inspiration to see our school community come together in kindness, support, and love. Among the many things that happened across our school communities this week, Longfellow Middle School joined a number of our schools in United Against Hate by hosting a daily kindness challenge. And I had the opportunity to moderate a panel of BHS students after a fem screaming from Not in Our Town at the UC Theater on Monday. The four senior panelists that I got to interview were a bit nervous, but they spoke really boldly about their efforts as advocates for peace in their school communities and beyond, and discussed complex issues while taking into account the diversity of our beliefs in our community. I was inspired by the courage of these students, the ways in which they modeled a true appreciation for the many differences that make up our city and schools, difference of thought, perspective, experience, appearance, et cetera, and moreover, how they called out that it is our humanity that binds us together as family. I was honored to center and highlight student perspectives in conversations and spaces that are too often adult-heavy. These babies challenged me and everyone in the audience, and they challenged each of us to do better and more with our collective responsibility to not just stand against hate, but to be examples of peace, love, and life. At all the events this week, there are resources. Somebody wants to call me, sorry. At all of these events, that's my daughter, I apologize. At all of these events this week, there were resources shared and highlighting of programs that exist on campus and in the larger community. And we are working to get this information available on our website as well, if you are not able to attend. Keeping with the theme of community collaboration and critical conversations, I, along with members of the district team and board directors, participated in a safety forum about two weeks ago, hosted by the BHS Berkeley High School Safety Committee. The event that also included the Police Department, BUSD administrators and staff, BHS administrators and staff, as well as safety officers, parents, caregivers, community members, and of course, most importantly, students, was a great opportunity for us to engage in some initial dialogue about the ways that together we can work to keep our students safe. We discussed a number of topics. Many of these discussions are to be continued, including elements of school safety plans, recommendations from committee members, and a thoughtful Q and A session and public comments with a wide range of feedback and suggestions to the group, including finding effective ways to address student vaping, weapons, student safety, and communicating during critical incidents that happen both on campus and around our campuses. Keeping with the theme of safety and wellness, I want to remind you all that our Berkeley High School Wellness Center's grand opening is on Saturday, December 2nd, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Berkeley High School. That should be, that should be an applause, because this has been a long time coming. We talk about safety and well-being and having a center and space for our babies to come and be and breathe is really important. So that Wellness Center is being opened again on Saturday, December 2nd. Those who attend will see student performances, hear from speakers, sample some of the mental well-being programs that are available to our students at Berkeley High, and visit tables with various mental health resources, and there will be food trucks, too. We've made many strides as a community around safety, wellness, and student belonging, and our collective effort to make sure our schools are welcoming, inclusive, and safe in the various ways defined. I want to point out that there are two information items on this evening's agenda. We've both updated our procedures to provide more clarity and transparency. So if you look in the information items, you will see a couple of policies. And these include policies that are aimed at campus security, visitor and outsider procedures, disruptions, and civility on campus. These policies and the ones that are coming up at the next meeting, which will be focusing more on our complaint procedures, are in line with the safety recommendations made from various community convenings over the past several years. Still, that said, with the progress made, we know that we still have a lot of work to do to create safe, inclusive, and positive school communities. And I say thank you in advance for the ways that you will continue to push us to do more and better, and moreover, how you will engage with us as critical partners and collaborators towards this end. I'm almost done. Creating a safe and welcoming community really requires us to be, you've heard it before, requires us to be preventative and proactive, responsive, and restorative. Prevention and proactivity for educators takes many forms, including teaching students about differences and inclusion, creating welcoming and humanizing spaces for all of our students, and providing them with opportunity to interact across difference, participate in critical conversations, and have practice expressing their own ideas and challenging the ideas of others in a safe environment. As a district, we support and encourage teachers to emphasize the importance of empathy and open-mindedness, to cultivate a generation of students who can engage critically with diverse perspectives. We support the integration of diverse perspectives in the curriculum, including narratives across diversity, different people's stories, different perspectives of those stories, histories, as well as major events. We also encourage our students to question sources, analyze biases, and consider multiple viewpoints. We believe this is important to create spaces for respectful and inclusive dialogue. Our teachers engage in professional development on pedagogy and practice. They have coaching, they share resources, and they themselves have space. And we continue to make more spaces for them to participate in critical conversations as well and learn how to create those spaces for our students. All of this is grounded in our four E's, equity, excellence, enrichment, and engagement. BUSD not only supports, but we believe that it is important that our educators are allowed to have and to teach controversial issues respectfully and responsibly. In fact, we believe by presenting multiple perspectives, presenting factual information, and providing multiple opportunities for students to express ideas, share their personal stories and feelings, we give our students opportunities to really develop essential skills that are about thinking, developing tolerance, and understanding conflicting points of view in our diverse student body. We think that it's important to teach these skills that instill values of tolerance, cooperation, empathy, and nonviolent problem solving in diverse school communities like our own. I am so glad to see so many of our educators in the room this evening, and I am super excited to see some of our students here and cannot wait to hear what they're going to share with us and with you this afternoon. Last thing I want to do is highlight that we have some more items on tonight's board agenda that I want you to make sure to pay attention to. We're going to hear a presentation from our multilingual learner, our multilingual learner master plan. And it's a plan that strategically outlines how we'll make sure that our English-language learners are really able to access and engage in that rich learning experience that I just mentioned earlier. Staff, we're going to review the goals of this plan, as well as share some of the progress we've made in that area. We also have an information item that has the initial timeline for the development of our 2024, 2024, 2027 LCAP. And finally, Friday is the last day of school before we go into fall break. That sigh is a sigh that is probably a collective sigh. We are excited about the break. We all need the break. And we know how important and how rest itself is a form of resilience. So we do appreciate you all for being here, but we do hope that you are not here next week, that you really take advantage of the week off to be in community, to be with family, and to rest and rejuvenate. I and staff are really grateful for the opportunity to be in service of you and the babies of BUSD, and that is the end of my comments, President.
Thank you, and thank you so much. Now we will move towards our public comment period, which is only 30 minutes. And we do try and save at least 10 minutes for our Zoom callers. If you are on Zoom and would like to speak, please raise your hand so that I can gauge time. Okay, not too many hands online. That's pretty good. And so that means we can take 25 minutes for in-person and save the last five for online callers. Starting with our CTE program, our students from the CTE program, if you can come forward now, you will have seven minutes.
Oh, seven minutes.
As a collective group, yes. Oh, can you use those?
Time's starting now. Hi, I'm Miriam Kleinstahl. I am one of the co-founders of the Arts and Humanities Academy, and it's my 28th year at Berkeley High as a visual arts teacher. Thank you. And we're here to talk about our interdisciplinary projects. The one that we're going to show you, right, that you're looking at is a quilt project made between US history, US Lit, chemistry, and visual arts. Every semester, we do integrated projects that are, that have academic classes and a science class, and they're arts-integrated, and they culminate in an exhibition or a performance. So for this project, students interviewed somebody that immigrated to Berkeley. And I'm going to bring up Gigi, one of our seniors, who worked on this project last year, to tell you about this project.
Good evening. Our main focus in this project was trying to highlight stories, untold stories, the stories you wouldn't normally hear about. And these stories about people immigrating to Berkeley, one of the things we wanted to know was something you don't really think about. What's a smell that reminded you of home? And through your interview, you would ask in this, they would be like, oh, my person, the smell that reminded them of home was maple, and maple leaves, they're Canadian. So our next step was to go and research in our chemistry classes, what was the chemical composition of that smell? And we researched it, and we made presentations about it, and we really learned the makeup of that smell. And as you can see, we all embroidered chemical compositions on all of our quilt pieces, and those are the smells that relate them back to their home, back to where they came from. And I thought it was an amazing project, and I think it was probably the best midterm I ever took. And it was beautiful to see all of this come together. And our next speaker is Malia.
Hi, so something that's different from the quilt was that we got to make our own paint in our chemistry class and use it in our art class to make, well, paint anything. And yeah, I think that was really cool. It was really interesting to learn about like the chemical part of making paint. And it was really interesting and really fun to be able to make your own paint and make your own materials that you would use for yourself to make, you know, your own artwork. And we also learned about the preservation of artwork and what people have done to preserve artwork that has been found in the 1500s. We saw manuscripts from the 1500s and old paintings and carvings that were carved in rock and wood. And that was really cool.
Hi, I'm Violet. I'm also a senior in AHA. And I wanted to talk about, can you hear me? Sorry. I wanted to talk about one of our newer technologies, and that's the Resograph printer that we were just able to access. And so Resograph printing is, well, it's more of a complicated kind of printing, but it creates these really high-quality works where you can play with different colors and printing on different materials with different fonts and all of that kind of thing. And so for me, I've always been a writer. I've worked at, like, I've been published in The Jacket. I have a website, yada, yada, like. But one thing that this Resograph printer has done is given me the ability to self-publish. I've been releasing zines, and it's really cool to have the access to kind of see what it looks like if I were to have a career in the arts. I've been able to combine my love of art with my love of writing, which I haven't really been able to do before. So it's been cool to have that, and it's kind of helping me get an idea of what I want to do.
Yeah, a project coming up is also going to be publishing. AHA is starting our own publishing house. And our 10th grade anatomy class this spring will be interviewing fifth graders about what they want to know about their bodies. So they're going to make an anatomy workbook that we will publish and distribute to fifth-grade classes. And it'll be our 10th graders will be illustrating them and writing them based on themes that students want to know about their bodies. I want to introduce Chris Hondros, our chemistry teacher, who has done these awesome projects with our last minute here.
I think the students said everything I wanted to say, but just having the opportunity to integrate STEAM principles into the chemistry classroom, we don't really always think about that. And having the opportunity to, we took a field trip out to Cowles Doe Library, where they saw the preservation department, the conservation department, and see what is open to them in the realm of both art and science together. And really just combining that and opening the mind to the students and having the students explore it for themselves, I think is a really powerful thing. And with the quilts, I mean, I'm still floored by the quilt from last year, because it does bring voices to those who tell their stories, and it's imprinted. And when you go to an art exhibit and you see your story being told, I can only imagine. That's really powerful.
One last thing before we open it up to all these lovely people is that we recently got a sponsorship with Bayer, and that's allowed us to really expand what we do in integration. We were really good at the humanities and art together. And now we're really working on bringing in science and math, because we see that as an equity issue where our students often struggle. And so I think by integrating science and math into our curriculum in this way, we're seeing students' success in math and science increase. So I just wanted to mention that sponsorship. We're really happy to partner with Bayer, and we have $360,000 over five years through that sponsorship.
First round of the artist team grants.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I have some students here, I believe may all be from the Jewish Student Union. I'm not sure if they're all from the student union, but Leor Standar, Benjamin Ross, and Simone Hard. Are you all here to present together? Okay, you all have one minute each. Leor, Benjamin, followed by Simon.
My name is Ben Ross. I'm co-president of the Berkeley High School Jewish Student Union, and I speak on behalf of some Jews and non-Jews at my club who are disturbed by how teachers have dealt with the war in Israel. Many Jews have personal ties to Israel via their friends, family, or religious beliefs. Verbal attacks on Israel affect them personally. Talking about Israel in classrooms has often led to the fear that students have for their love, to teachers trying to discount the fear that students have for their loved ones, help, or trivialize students' religious beliefs. In my club, I have heard of teachers passing out flyers and putting up posters for political group boycott, divestment, and sanctions whose goals would deeply affect these students' loved ones. And they have also advertised their personal social media accounts and have downplayed the importance of Zionism for Jews. Berkeley High has announced a zero-tolerance policy for antisemitism and Islamophobia.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your time is at one minute. Bell ring.
Hi, my name is Simon Hera. I am a seventh grader at Martin Luther King Middle School here in BUSD. You don't have to agree with what I'm about to say, but I hope you will lend me your ears. I'm a Jewish kid. Recently, I heard that Judaism is not meant to be taught or talked about at all in the Berkeley School District. Why? I thought in Berkeley, all our voices were meant to be heard, all our culture is taught. But I guess that excludes some people, like me. At school, we are not allowed to have any political beliefs being hung in our classrooms. Yet I know teachers who wear anti-Jewish pins or hang political paraphernalia about this war in their classrooms. And truly, it makes me sad seeing some of my favorite teachers here today against me. Shame on you not making an attempt to help every one of your students feel safe. On the daily, I have my peers comment on my features badly just because I am Jewish. You have a big nose because you're a stupid Jew. They say it's just a joke. Kids speaking to me in German and following it with, "I don't like your people." They say it's just a joke. They say my traditions are dumb and not welcome. They say it's just a joke. But really, it isn't funny. Wake up, Berkeley. Your kids don't feel safe. Thank you.
Benjamin Ross?
Hi, my name is Leor Standar, and I'm an Israeli Jewish ninth-grade student at Berkeley High School. I moved to Berkeley from Israel this past summer. Recently, all U9 students had to give a presentation about their culture as part of the ethnic studies curriculum. Some of my friends and classmates were scared to present about their Jewish culture worrying what classmates or teachers might say. However, it should not be like this in a school that is supposed to be a safe space for children. I have heard stories about ethnic studies teachers being racist against Jews or saying things against Israel, and for me, that is unacceptable. A teacher that is teaching a class such as ethnic studies, of which the whole piece of the course is to make students feel safe in their school and included in the curriculum, should not make their students feel like a target in that class, even though it seems like the norm is for every teacher to make their students feel safe in their class, no matter their race or ethnicity. That is unfortunately not the reality. I would like to talk about my ethnic, my ethnic studies teacher, Mr. Pietra, who makes sure I feel safe in class, and I think all teachers should be like him.
Thank you. We have Amelia and Eva Levinson on the Green New Deal, followed by Azariah, followed by October. If you could come in line up so we could take advantage of more time so that you can immediately be at the mic. So October, Herdenstein, and Amelia, if you could, not Amelia, Azariah, if you could line up behind them. Oh, can you give them a minute and 30 seconds together?
All right. Good evening, School Board and Superintendent. My name is Eva Levinson, and I'm a sophomore at Berkeley High. I'm also a leader of the Sunrise Club. I'm here to ask you to pass the Green New Deal for schools. We're here as a follow-up to our previous meeting, to the previous meeting when our members asked you to sign the resolution for the Green New Deal. Our demands are as follows: free and healthy lunches, safe and clean buildings, climate disaster plans and climate curriculums, and finally, clear pathways to green jobs. Our school district has already shown its commitment to the environment and its community. We have accomplished several of the demands on this list. Wouldn't it be amazing if BUSD was a catalyst for change near the beginning of the Green New Deals for Schools movement to spread the message and show your support nationwide? Right now, students are woefully undereducated about career paths after high school, especially in regards to green jobs. I think this should change.
My name's Amelia Monagle Olsen, and I'm a senior at Berkeley High, also part of the Sunrise Club. I'm here today because of the devastating impacts of the climate crisis. Around the country and the world, people have lost their homes, their health, their loved ones, and their lives. It's overwhelming, learning about all these tragedies, but not knowing what to do about them. But the thing is, we're not powerless. We need to think globally and act locally. By implementing the demands of the Green New Deal for schools, we can start by protecting our community. We can be part of the National Sunrise Movement, demanding attention and demanding change. We can provide more pathways to green jobs and make our schools safe spaces in the event of climate disasters. Thank you for listening. We hope you take our request of considering this Green New Deal for School resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not sure we actually have a copy of it, so if you can make sure you email us the resolution at boardofit@berkeley.net. Thank you so much. Next. Okay, I'll give you three minutes total, because I have to move forward. You give it to the board secretary, and she will.
Hello, my name is James. I'm a transgender student at Berkeley High, and you've all seen me up here before. I'd like to I'd like to start my speech by saying that I am here for another topic, but first I need to acknowledge what most of the room is here for. I can't speak for my whole group, but I, as a Jew, along with many other trans students here, stand with Palestine and we stand against the genocide that Israel is committing. I, I've been up here before and I don't come here because I enjoy coming to board meetings. I don't come here because I enjoy telling you all stories that I would rather keep private. I'm 17. I should be working on college apps and not asking you for basic resources like bathrooms, but I, like many other trans students, don't have reliable access to bathrooms at my school. Multiple times this week, I've waited over 15 minutes for a bathroom to change my pad in worried that I would bleed through my pants. None of the BUSD schools have enough bathrooms and the ones we do have are in disrepair. Our school has spent the money countless times to like regularly repaint over generally harmless graffiti in the bathrooms, but they haven't fixed the toilet seat in the GH bathroom for months and they haven't replaced the sink handles in C2. We have a pencil working as a handle in the C2 bathroom because students have been replacing the handle with a pencil because they have not replaced it. BUSD is seen as an inclusive district, but we cannot call ourselves that if all students are not provided equitable access to resources. A school is not welcoming or supportive when students can't even use the bathroom.
We, on behalf of the trans students of Berkeley High, have compiled a list of requests towards equal treatment of transgender youth at our school. We request that before school resumes after Thanksgiving break, all dinner neutral bathrooms remain unlocked throughout the school day from zero to seventh period. We request that the gender neutral bathroom in the Health Center be accessible to all students who will fill out a request slip. We request that all bathrooms, including gender neutral bathrooms, will consistently have working sinks, soap dispensers, functioning toilets, menstrual product descensors, soap and operable stall doors. All Berkeley High students deserve safe and functional restrooms. It will be clearly conveyed to everyone involved that students should have the freedom to enter buildings not corresponding to their hall passes, which would enable them to use gender neutral bathrooms. While gender neutral bathrooms are inaccessible, teachers will be allowed to lend students keys to gender neutral faculty restrooms, especially in buildings lacking gender neutral bathrooms. Additionally, goals that we know are not easy to implement, we would like two gender neutral bathrooms in each, two gendered bathrooms in each building to be converted to gender neutral bathrooms and a mandatory curricula for all students to be created, which addresses bathroom culture at Berkeley High School, covering graffiti, vaping and smoking and more, including people who have sex in our two functioning and reliably unlocked gender neutral bathrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. And we do have your demands. I have to move to the next topic now, but thank you. We have it here, we can read it. Thank you. Alex Day, followed by Julio Gonzalez. I have one minute each.
All right. Yeah, my colleague here is just standing with me. So, welcome everybody, or hello everybody. Come to Unite to speak about the need to teach for Palestine and the need for the board to vocally and fully support that right and need of educators in BUSD. Sorry, y'all have to forgive me, usually I'm more prepared, but I'm just kind of going off the top here. So, we're really in a time of great repression in our district. Now, what we need to do in order to make all students feel welcome is to really lean into controversial topics following the board policy. But to do that, we need to teach about Palestine, because what do we do if I'm in a history classroom talking about colonialism and a student says, "Does this apply to my family in Palestine?" Am I to lie to them? It's racist against Arabs and Palestinians to deny their reality, just as it's antisemitic to deny antisemitism.
Thank you. Next, after Julio, if we could have Ms. Angela Gallegos Castillo to be ready.
My name is Julio Gonzalez. I'm from Berkeley High School. I'm here to stand in solidarity with the hundreds of students who came out in support of Palestine and who are against genocide. I stand with them all. I'm here to ask you to please support a resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza. Thank you. Free Palestine.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, School Board members. My name is Dr. Angela Gallegos Castillo, Berkeley resident, parent of two young adults that went through the school district. And I'm here representing Latinos Unidos at Berkeley and friends, talking about the Ethnic Studies Advisory Committee. Thanks to the efforts and commitment of students, staff, teachers, community members and groups, as well as the financial support and commitment of the district, the dream of having the stories and voices of all marginalized people most impacted by racism, being told as part of our district's wide curriculum, is actually coming to fruition. Let's not drop the ball. Let's continue doing it. This is long overdue. These are challenging times which elevate the urgency and the importance of this curriculum. I'm going to give my rest of it.
Hi, my name is Janice Tonamur and I'm representing the community group BUSD API. We're here to express our enthusiasm and support for the progress that the school district has made towards implementing its commitment to TK through 12th grade ethnic studies curriculum. The, the work that the district has done this year is truly impressive and commendable.
Thank you. Thank you. That is the time.
I think, did I get one more minute?
I called one name, so that person had one minute. So, thank you. I have several other subjects here. I'm going to make room for one more, which is around G-chat. There are six or seven people here around G-chat, G-chat issues at BHS. If I could give you three minutes for this subject? Yes, so when you have the same point, if a couple people can speak.
There's a lot of different things.
Well, then I need like one minute each for three people.
I'm going to speak. I'll speak. We're good. I'm just going to talk real fast.
Just do one minute and then they can switch speakers after one minute. I'm only given three minutes for this topic total.
For three minutes, please, thank you.
I think she wanted to speak, so you can speak for one minute.
There's not enough time to talk, we'll talk about what we have to talk about. All right, all right. So, Berkeley High Special Day Class Home Base is where we teach our most medically fragile and high-needs students. In the past two years, since the current program manager has joined the high school team, the room has also started to be used to warehouse students with histories of violent outbursts. Many students, as well as staff, have been physically assaulted, myself included, and occasionally hospitalized. Multiple incident reports have been filed this semester alone, but we believe that sped administration has mostly sat on them as the classroom has continued to grow more and more unsafe for both students and staff. There is an additional pattern that started when the current program manager came into the department, a pattern of retaliation against employees, firings, and involuntary transfers against people who do things like legally mandated CPS reports. Our current program supervisor also created a private group chat for case managers this year to inform them about absences. Two new teachers use their official district emails to smear some of the people you see here. By name, our program supervisor was present on that chat. She did not correct the participants at any point, even as other certificated teachers began to voice their concerns. The program manager was also present on the chat thread and allowed this hostile and unprofessional behavior to continue. The principal recently met with us as a classified team. We asked for a restorative justice meeting, which she promptly scheduled for us. Thank you, Tanya. On Monday morning, when it was set to take place, the current program supervisor canceled it and instead invited us to a group meeting for the whole department, having us in the same room with the people we filed hostile work complaints against two weeks earlier. We, as a team, have no faith in the current sped administration. We are asking for the immediate resignation of the program manager, the program supervisor, and we are asking for the teacher who used the group chat to smear employees by name to be removed from classrooms at BHS immediately and for victims of retaliation to be reinstated. And we stand with the students on the bathroom issue.
Just to say really quickly, we had a couple of people in here who had specific experiences with this G-chat. We passed out the G-chat. I know there are many of you have actually read it, but like, we have a lot to say about this for future events. Thank you.
Thank you. There is an opportunity for a second public comment at the, at the end. If you're able to come back, you can even do second public comment from online. I'm sorry, Sarah, I don't, I have not called your name. We're moving to our online speakers now. I have, I can call two, the first two up there, even though we had three, but I think that third person who had raised her hand dropped off. So we're going to go with Becky Villigram, followed by Yvette Falarca.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
You're on mute.
Can you hear me now? It says I'm not on mute.
Is our audio on mute? Can you keep talking so we can just do like test?
Hi, my name is Becky Villigram.
I'm sorry, we don't hear her.
I'm not, I'm not on mute.
Can we try Yvette Falarca maybe come back? I don't know if it's her audio or our audio.
Hi, can people hear me?
No, we're not able to hear our online callers. I apologize. We will try and get this fixed. In the meantime, I will move towards our next committee comment. Is there anyone from one of our board appointed committees here? All righty. We'll receive you from, I believe, the PNO Committee. And they have five minutes.
Good evening, President Babbitt, School Board Directors, and to our district leadership as well. My name is Weldon Bradstreet. I am one of the co-chairpersons of the BSEP and BARA Planning and Oversight Committee, and this may be the shortest committee comment that BSEP has ever made. Last night, the Planning and Oversight Committee convened its first meeting of the school year with our newly, newly elected school representatives in place, and we're already working on matters important to our students. Tonight, I have the pleasure to deliver the Planning and Oversight Committee's unanimous endorsement of the Berkeley Public Schools Educational Excellence Act of 2024. I'm also happy to report that many members of our committee have already expressed interest in supporting the campaign to get this new BSEP measure passed by the voters of Berkeley in March 2024. We're building a team already, and thank you for your time and attention tonight.
Thank you. Now we will move towards union comments. I see Matt Myers here, our president of BFT. And then we followed by Jocelyn, yay, BCC is also in the house. Any other unions in house tonight? Okay. Five minutes. I'll turn you.
I'm just watching the time, it's not reset. Oh, I got it. Hello, Superintendent Ford Mirthel in the Berkeley School Board. I am Matt Meyer, president of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. I am here today to speak to the importance of what we do in the classroom and what brings us to this work. Each and every educator cares deeply about their students, wants their students to succeed, and works to create a classroom environment where our students learn to engage in the world around them. Whether it is providing social emotional tools, collaborative creation tasks, Kratic seminars, or learning to code, our students are curious and want to learn. They want to know how to write an effective persuasive essay, how to balance a budget, and how to make sense of a fast-changing world. The Common Core standards speak to this as well. We are tasked to teach analysis skills, point of view, research, evidence, historical interpretation, and context. We have shifted our practice over the decades from memorizing facts and figures to helping our students make meaningful connections and think critically about their world. We've been encouraged, no matter our subject area, in an age-appropriate manner to meet the students where they are, to connect with their interests and questions, and to have hard conversations. We bring our authentic selves into this space, just as we expect our students to. As professionals, we help our students build their skills through demonstration, practice, engagement, and challenge. Our school board policies reaffirm this. I would like to quote from BUSD Board policy. "The governing board believes that students should have opportunities to discuss controversial issues which have political, religious, social, historical, or economic significance in which students are mature enough to investigate and address. The study of controversial issues should help students learn how to gather and organize pertinent facts, discriminate between fact and fiction, draw intelligent conclusions, and respect the opinions of others. Instructional policy on controversial issues is hereby stated by the board in order to protect teachers and school administrators from unwarranted attack by pressure groups and to ensure youth a well-balanced education. Thus," this is not foreplay, no, "it is 100% for teachers, appropriate for teachers to be discussing global events in their classroom. The debates that are going on in our country are going on in our schools. We provide historical context, data, perspectives, and questions so our students can deliberate and draw conclusions. We even share our own beliefs, as well as beliefs we don't hold, to help our students think critically. This is our work. In these last few weeks, our professionalism and profession have been under attack. Our teachers are nervous to talk about the conflict between Israel and Palestine. They are worried someone will put in a complaint and will try to get them in trouble for activism they're doing on their own time in their personal lives. They've been even told to take down signs or that their administrator will judge them for trying to live up to BUSD's own board policy. All these things are happening. We should expect that engaging in conversations where there's not 100% agreement will be uncomfortable. In the past few years, many conversations about race and racism have been difficult but necessary. There will be disagreement, there will be debate. Some of us have signs and messages in our classrooms about all kinds of political topics, whether it be police brutality, the rights of LGBTQ students, the failure to pass meaningful gun regulations, climate change regulations, abortion rights, supporting Ukraine, and yes, opinions on the war going on between Israel and Palestine. None of this political speech stifles conversations and in fact, oftentimes invites them. Having opinions is not hate speech. We must respect the diversity of opinions our students and staff have, but not be afraid to have opinions. The pressure being put on by outside groups to stifle protected speech and authentic learning experiences must stop, and we must be allowed to do our jobs and support our students in their educational journey. Mario Savio, someone who holds an important role in this community, specifically said in 1964, "To me, freedom of speech is something that represents the very dignity of what a human being is. That's what marks us off from the stones and the stars. You can speak freely. It is almost impossible for me to describe. It is the thing that marks us as just below the angels." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education. After a year of listening, engaging in communication, it has come to my attention that communication in this district continues to be poor, as well as the, as well as the lack of relational trust. It has caused our members a great dis-ease, stress, and a lack of faith in administration and management. As a union, we have great concerns for our members. We have begun doing safety walks at schools to ensure that schools are safe and that employees have good working conditions. These walks are done at about six schools thus far. While we are doing these walks, we had to keep going back to BHS. This prompted us to look deeper into This prompted us to look deeper into the issues at VHS. What we found were that IAS sped twos were working out of class, many in the role of behavioral intervention specialists, BIS for short. There were multiple cases of student-on-staff assaults, where we found that the reports were taken from the IAs and given to program managers who sat on those reports. Some of those reports resulted in worker comp claims. We also found that students in need of BIS support were shuffled into the home-based programs and removed from the general population. These kids are in need of BIS support, and they are rotating IAS sped twos in and out of that program. IAS sped twos are working out of class to this day, due to the district saying that BIS are no longer needed. This was further confirmed in the LMC when the Personnel Commission Supervisor stated that she was given a directive not to fill the BIS positions. We also found challenges with the scheduling and the lack of clarity of who the supervisors of the IAs are. Further conversations uncovered more complaints, and the complaints ranged from underreporting to pure disrespect. The oppressive language that is currently being used towards this staff in the face of the student body was both undermined and created safety issues as well. What is the message that we're sending to students? If teachers don't respect us, then why should they? In most cases, the work is reduced to sitting in the back of the classroom with students who are difficult to manage. And if a BCC member could not manage it, then a contractor would. However, what we recently found out is that the contractors are as disposable as we are. It wasn't until the infamous G chat gang. The G chat gang is a group of 21 teachers whose roles and responsibilities vary in special education. Three teachers were vocal in disparaging remarks towards classified, which led to a flood of Title IX complaints. This G chat left the IAs feeling devalued, invisible, and disrespected. This again is the way that we are being treated from the top down. To add insult to injury, you then have a case manager and the program manager cancel the restorative justice and call a private meeting where they put the IAs in the room with teachers who made these disparaging remarks. In addition, the case manager and the program manager are included in this G chat. If this were a classified or certificated issue, we would be on administrative leave with pay. Lack of relational trust makes me want to push back on the current, the current class and comp study. In the very beginning stages, I made a public comment as it related to Glendaly getting a 5% increase. My comments were respectfully, this class and comp is to relieve classified. It is not, it is to bring us to a living wage. It is to relieve the working poor. It is not to reclass from the top down. It is our firm belief that there is a conflict of interest all the way around. We have to engage, we have had to engage the commission around our concerns, and the commission agreed that we need to look at this closely, as it will impact the livelihood of all of our members. Thank you.
Thank you. Have we been able to rectify the online? Okay, but are we able to hear from our online? Okay, Ms. Villigram, can you speak now?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I don't think it's working still. We still can't hear her.
On the Zoom, we can hear each other. It's just.
I think they can hear online, but we can't hear here in the boardroom. Um, so we do have one committee who submitted comments via video. I've just learned, so we will hear from them now. And I guess I apologize to our online callers. It doesn't look like we're going to be able to hear from you this evening. But to everyone, you can email us your comments. We probably received a lot of them already, but we're to bed at Berkeley.net. I'm sorry, I'm not able to screen share for some reason. We should move on. I'm not able to screen share on this computer either. The audio, I think. No, it doesn't sound like the audio is working either. Okay. Well, we tried. Can you demote our public commenters who we won't be hearing from, so that they're no longer on the screen for everyone? And now we will move towards our board comments. Who would like to go first, board members? Okay, Director Chang stepping up. All right.
Stepping it up. So, thank you all for coming. So, so full again, and so appreciative of everybody's voices here. Thank you, Superintendent Ford Mirthel for your reminder supporting safe but also brave spaces. I know this is a challenge for everybody and for anyone. What does safe mean? What does brave mean? Those are the things that with, a place like Berkeley, we have had decades of experience. I'm totally going off script now. Hopefully it doesn't totally make sense here. We have had decades of ethnic studies here. We're literally 25 years ahead of the state mandate for ethnic studies in high schools. I very strongly believe that the acceptance that there will always be viewpoints different from our own is critical to the development of our kids' self-confidence, self-awareness, and critical analytical skills. That doesn't mean that we have to agree on things, but we can agree to disagree and have a space that is not only safe for all students and all persons involved, but also that is brave. This means to me, from a governance perspective, trusting the pedagogical practices of the subject professionals in our district, namely our great teachers. And of course, again, from a Berkeley values-based pedagogy, that means information that is grounded in all facts and histories. In this regard, I want to give a shout out again to BUSS's long-serving, decades-long ethnic studies program. As a reminder, however, if anyone feels that they have been harassed or discriminated against on the basis of shared ancestry in violation of Title VI of the Federal Civil Rights Act, please reach out to the District Civil Rights Compliance Office. It is well-staffed, and its purpose is exactly to respond to such concerns. You have process there. In the past two weeks, I'm supposed to tell you what I have done, so you don't think I'm just sitting on my laurels. I had visited Longfellow Middle School for an onsite. It was pretty exciting. I'm not like a construction dude and not particularly burly. So when I saw the two onsite construction managers and impressive work they were doing, I was, wow, they're there onsite and they're engaged fully with the principal and the vice-principal. I was very impressed with the communications that they have. They have each other's text messages. I was there when an electrical outage occurred and immediately the principal engaged with the site manager who was there, and he spun around and went right to the site and helped the teacher resolve that issue. I also have attended the VHS Safety Committee, and I also saw and learned that our administration and parents are engaged in conversation. The superintendent was there as well as her team on important safety issues ranging from security cameras and door locks, which have come up before here in this forum, to Title VI, Title IX protections. I attended the Construction Bonds Committee as well with Director Shunovsky, and was also impressed by the vast range of modernization construction projects that are occurring across this district to ensure accessibility but also inspirational spaces. So that type of engagement with the outcome and the shaping of design, et cetera, is again closely aligned with the type of expression, the speech that we see here with folks coming to public comment and coming to committee meetings. Please again, continue to reach out to me by email to set Zoom office hours. I've had a number of those such engagements, and in the future, I will have actual physical office hours. I did hear some folks asking about that. I just haven't scheduled them out yet. Thanks a lot.
Director Shunovsky?
Yes, I'm going next. So a couple of things. First, I just want to thank especially the presentation with that quilt. As a chemist and somebody that has a lot of crafty hobbies, I just, that was so great. And I know through my own teaching of chemistry how important it is to really bring other disciplines in to make it seem less daunting and more accessible. So I just really loved it. I also want to emphasize the first read of a couple of board policies tonight. I'm grateful to our policy committee for bringing these to us. We have a first read of the Uniform Complaint Procedure Board Policy, and I really hope that this helps to streamline the process. I know that we've been receiving a lot of complaints lately, and so I just want to give a shout out to all the staff that is working really hard to work through those in a fair and fast way. And I ask for everyone that has submitted a complaint to please be patient and know that our staff are working really hard to, you know, do their due diligence and research complaints and make sure that they can provide a timely response. I want to thank PNO once again for coming again tonight and voicing their support for the BSEP renewal. I just really appreciate that committee and all the work they've done. I also want to give a shout out to the IAs that are here today. I spent some time over the last couple of weeks trying to learn more about the special ed program, especially at Berkeley High School. And so I want to thank the teachers, the staff, and the administrators that spoke with me to help to, for me to learn more. And thanks for all the work that you do at the schools. I also had a chance to visit RISE in the last couple of weeks, and I talked with Ms. Betty about how she's expanding the program and how that's going. So that was really wonderful to see. And I've also been having some conversations about our ninth grade math and how we really can work towards a true universal ninth grade for our kids that avoids any tracking at all in our schools. I attended the Berkeley High Safety Meeting with some of my colleagues. That's already mentioned a few times. And I've had a number of meetings in the last couple of weeks with concerned parents. So there's a lot that's going on in the district and a lot that we need to tackle. I know parents are concerned about issues of antisemitism, Islamophobia, inadequate supports for our trans kids, sexual harassment, and consent education and harm. So I've met with parents about all of those issues. I do want to have one final comment. I just want to say once again that I stand with teachers in support of their academic freedom. I've gotten a few questions questioning whether academic freedom applies to K through 12. It is in our BFT contract, so our teachers do have that academic freedom, and I fully support that. And I really want to lift up some of the comments that have been made earlier that we need to consider our teachers to be professionals and experts at their craft. And so I thank the teachers for doing the work that they do every single day for our kids. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice President Vastidin?
Yeah, I'm going to keep my comments pretty brief tonight, but I just wanted to thank everyone who came out to the board meeting. I especially wanted to thank our students. It was really wonderful just to see so many different diverse issues that our students were flagging for us. So keep coming. We're here to serve you. That's why we stay up late. That's why we, you know, make these hard decisions. It's really to make sure that we're doing what's in your best interest. So thank you to our students for coming out. Wanted to thank our labor partners for flagging very important issues, including the importance of protecting academic freedom. And so thank you very much for being here. I know it's a very hard job and you're very tired, and so really appreciate you being with us tonight. I also just wanted to thank our trans students that keep coming. It's very heartbreaking for me that we're not able to address their issues. I appreciate them writing our requests and want to make sure that we, you know, as a board, take the time to read this and to really respond to all the bullet points that they laid out for us. Oh, for our, I also want to thank our CTE students that came out and presented both, you know, on, on the merits of the subject matter, because I thought it was great that their project was focused on immigration and creating a sense of belonging for all of our diverse communities, but also because they all come from different, from diverse backgrounds too. And so what's beautiful about our CTE program is that students from all sorts of different academic backgrounds can be attracted, can feel a part of this important program. So I just wanted to thank our students that came out tonight. I also just wanted to update the community on what's been going on. On Monday evening, I wanted to thank Director Chang, district staff, and parents from Latinos and Niños de Berkeley for getting together to discuss, you know, how we're doing on our ELL master plan. I know that's going to be one of the topics of presentation tonight. But for the community, just to know that this is something that advocacy groups like Latinos, Niños de Berkeley really flag for the district on a regular basis. And so although I haven't seen the, you know, the presentation tonight, I have gotten some of the, the questions that constituents really want us to focus on. So thank you, Director Chang, for attending that meeting with me. And I also want to thank all of my board colleagues and for attending the Berkeley High Safety Committee meeting. I think, you know, there's, we hear about safety from a lot of different places, definitely from our elementary school parents, from the Moss Group, which I know the superintendent has, has mentioned before, the Make Our School Safe Group, and also from our high school. And these things are very much related. I think that something that's a very common thread that's coming out of these safety meetings is the need for improved coordination with BPD. And so I hope that they, these meetings keep happening, and I know that will be strengthened in the future, and the superintendent has wonderful plans on how to do that. But I think that that's been a common thread in both of those groups is that we really need to be talking more often to our city partners and coordinating more closely. And so I'm really happy that those conversations are happening. And also, one of the things that really stood out to me at that, at that Berkeley High meeting was just how we define safety in such a diverse way. What the students consider safety versus what the parents consider safety. And some, and having that transparency with the staff, I think, was really important too. I think it was a, it felt very much like a safe space where we could talk about, okay, these are some things that we're doing and some things that we can do better and have that open dialogue. And so I appreciate all of the parents that were there facilitating the meeting, because I know that was, that took a lot of work. And I also really appreciated the staff for being able to be vulnerable, especially the high school staff on, you know, what, what we're doing to improve, what are our growth areas. But that transparency and conversation, I think, also helps parents feel safer sending their, their children to their schools, to our schools as they should. So thank you again for coming tonight, looking forward to the presentation on the master plan and transportation too. I saw someone from AC Transit out there, Ryan. So very excited to follow up. There's a lot that happens in the background on transportation issues. And so I'm really excited that we're able to, to have this conversation tonight. My last comment was going to be about the D-LAC, the, the D-LAC Committee comments. I know we weren't able to see them, but in addition to sharing them with the Board of Directors, Superintendent, it would be great if we could put them publicly somewhere on the website so that members of the public that weren't able to hear them can hear them and that can listen to the concerns from our English language learners. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Director Lau.
Hi, everyone. Thank you all for being here with us tonight. I was very excited to walk into the meeting today and see so many of my fellow peers here to speak and support causes that they're passionate and affected by. I truly believe that in the state of our world, youth voices are both powerful and essential. So I commend all of you for taking the time to come here and speak to us tonight. I agree that our schools can and should continue to improve in ensuring our students feel safe and supported in and out of the classroom. Something that's been repeated heavily as a part of the Youth and Government Program, which I'm part of, is that we debate ideas and not people, which I think is really a crucial message at this time, especially when conversations are being held in our classrooms. And I would also like to encourage you all to, please feel free to reach out to me for any support you might need. especially for students, if you'd like to meet for lunch or after school. I'm holding office hours this Thursday at lunch in the Sea Gallery. So please come visit me because I don't want to eat lunch alone. And then next I want to talk about G-Shack, our District's Gender Equity and Sexual Harassment Committee. This is a topic that I deeply care about and have acted upon myself as co-president of B to Stop Harassing and a member of the Sexual Harassment Advisory Committee of Berkeley High. I'd like to highlight that the first meeting is Monday, November 27th from five to six thirty on Zoom. The details can be found on the BUSD website. And if you're interested in being a member of this committee, the applications are still available and due this Friday, November 17th. And I hope that parents and staff who are interested will consider applying and being a part of this important committee that serves their students. Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that I've excused Director Brown at approximately eight, 10 PM. She was trying to make it, but she really wasn't feeling well. So she is now excused. But she did want everyone to know that this Saturday she will be having office hours on Zoom. So please check the BUSD website for that link, for her Zoom link, and it will be at nine thirty AM this coming Saturday. Also want to give an update on the committees that I've been working on. So one has been the Two by Two Committee. That's a committee in which two board members meets with two city council members. A very important update that I think our teachers will be happy to hear about relates to the Millvia Street Parking Permit. In lieu of spending $27 million on a parking garage, we have been advocating with the city to offer us more parking permits so that you all won't have to continue to move your cars around Berkeley High every two hours, I believe it is. Leaving our classrooms and rushing and hustling to get back on time during breaks. So that is supposed to go before the City Council on December 12th. And so as many of you come to speak to us about it, that our advocacy goes as far as it goes. But I'm sure hearing from you all directly will definitely move the needle. So keep that in mind for December 12th and advocate appropriately. We also talked about our zero waste efforts, those who have been in the reusable advocacy method or mode for years. We have about four schools now that are actively using reusables all the time. So that is a praise. And we are saving a lot on disposals and we are also saving our community. That's going to come before the board in January as a part of our climate update. So you will hear more of the details on that and the plans for the next schools that we're going to roll that out. So I'm very glad that we are making progress with our reusables. You also talked about bright streets, making sure that our signs are clear and adequate to keep our schools safe. And we talked about the 2020 Vision, which is now called Yep. And there's a lot of swag now. Our students put together this logo. I don't know if you could see it. There's water bottles, there's notebooks, but it really celebrates our diversity and inclusion through the art of hair and hair designs lifted up by a book of reading. And we know that books includes all of our cultures in many ways. So I want to thank the students for that project and I want to thank the students for working on the RFP, those who apply to review the, the proposals for that spending. And we look forward to seeing how Yep is going to continue to support Berkeley Public Schools. Lastly, as she alluded to, I'm also on the policy committee. And we are bringing forth several policies. Several of you always talk about our policies and you wonder about our policies. Director Brown and I work very hard on trying to update most of these policies. We actually have another meeting tomorrow to, to keep the chain going. So the first readings of several of these policies are on the agenda today. And want to definitely point out the civility disruptions, uniform complaint procedure and complaints concerning the school. When you see resend on there, that's because we've learned that some of them have been on there twice or we're updating it. So it's not as if it's, it's going away. And that concludes my comments. Next, we will go towards asking for an approval of our consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, consent calendar has been approved. Do want to say one more thing though. If you are coming, if you are going to do public comment again at the end and you've already filled out a card, I'm going to put the cards out so you can resubmit that card. Otherwise, there'll be no way I can know or call you again at the end of the meeting. Yeah. So if you could just put that on the back table for them. And again, there's no guarantee that I will still be able to hear from all of you at the end of the meeting. Let's move towards our first presentation, which is Multilingual Master Plan. We have 30 minutes for this item.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent, members of the public. Before we get started, I do have Hilda Valencia's comments from D-LAC. And we think it would be important to be able to hear from the D-LAC. And before we present this presentation, we want to extend appreciation to members of the D-LAC. They are our parents and staff members. They are committed partners to this work. And we appreciate that commitment and partnership that they deliver to us when we have a chance to meet and engage with them. So these are the comments from the D-LAC representative. I will read them as she wrote them. My name is Hilda Valencia. I am the Chair of the District English Learner Advisory Committee. I'm providing comments on behalf of the D-LAC to the Board of Education on the implementation of Berkeley Unified's Multilingual Learner Master Plan. Since the plan was approved on December 14th, 2022, we held one D-LAC meeting each month, January to April, and two meetings in May. During every meeting, the D-LAC site reps collaborated with district leaders, staff and other educational partners on the needs assessment of the Multilingual Learner Master Plan, next steps for implementation and/or the Local Control Accountability Plan. The D-LAC parent and family members have been engaged in discussions, sharing their experience and input on topics such as testing, reclassification, instruction, curriculum and funding. One of the main comments in regards to testing that the D-LAC members shared is the need for their children to have time to practice taking the summative LPAC. During the D-LAC meeting in January, parents were shown how to help their child take a practice summative LPAC test at home and were given time to share any questions they had. This empowers parents to support their children in demonstrating their English language proficiency to the best of their ability. In May, the D-LAC agenda included how to understand the summative LPAC scores. In February, the D-LAC members contributed to the
Excuse me, I appreciate it. I just want to ask the audience if you could respect that we are in presentation mode. We do need to be able to hear what's happening. Thank you.
In February, the D-LAC members contributed to the implementation of the MLMP by participating and discussing the Needs Assessment Survey. The results of this survey have been critical to BUSD's partnership with parents and the implementation of the plan. For example, one parent wrote, I am wondering how current ELD teachers really have the time to be both ELD teachers and ELD site coordinators. Looking forward to the district to implement the MLMP in terms of the FTE allocation to site to be able to implement. The insights of the parent, that the insights the parents provided in the survey are critical to the development of next steps for instruction and programming. The D-LAC Committee learned about and gave input on the Local Control Accountability Plan goals that pertain to our multilingual learners during five meetings last year. Twenty committee members worked together to create and vote on nine recommendations to adjust the goals for this year. The recommendations included providing more support for our long-term English learners at the high school, expanding the constructing meaning PD to include the elementary schools and increasing outreach and support to our Latinx families. The D-LAC Committee meetings have been informative, productive and collaborative. We are looking forward to continuing to partner with the district to ensure that the master plan is fully realized and that our multilingual learners achieve academic excellence and reach their full potential. That concludes the comments and we will include the video in the, in the board communication this week. Okay, I'm going to have to project from my computer. Okay. I've got my computer up. Oh, you got it. Okay. All right. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Director Chris Albeck to make introductions for this presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, BUSD Board Directors and BUSD community. My name is Christopher Albeck and I am the Director of the Curriculum Instruction Department here in BUSD. It is a pleasure to be with you here this evening as my colleagues and I present to you an update on BUSD's Multilingual Language Learner Master Plan. As you recall from last fall, the approved master plan was a byproduct of a collaborative effort between educational partners. This plan built on BUSD's 2013 master plan and aligned BUSD with California Department of Education Guidelines and the California English Learner Roadmap. Before we begin, we will take a minute to introduce ourselves and our role in the BUSD community.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Marte. I am the Lead TSA for ELD KTK through 12th grade.
And I'm Matthew Espinoza Castro. I'm the Director for Equity Achievement and Belonging Department.
An appreciation for the team being here together this evening. As always, BUSD is committed to our common purpose of enabling and inspiring our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. In tonight's presentation, we'll be making reference to several tenants of the CNI department's cause. Also of note is the interdepartmental nature of this presentation and this work. We recognize that disrupting patterns of predictability for communities that have been underserved or under responded to do not happen solely with any single department's work. Next slide, please. In tonight's presentation, my colleagues and I will present an update on our current master plan. Although there are many components and subcomponents of this plan, tonight we'll be focusing on the six goals identified on the slide that you see before you. We will discuss each of the plan's goals with an update, aspiration and integration framework. As an update, we will share what has been accomplished so far this year. As an aspiration, we'll identify what our next steps are towards reaching that goal. For integration, we will recognize and pinpoint how our master plan's goals intersect with the elements established in BUSD's Latinx Resolution. Next slide, please. As you can see on the slide before you, the USD's Latinx Resolution has nine elements. And through this presentation, we will share the connections between the master plan's goals and the Latinx Resolution's essential elements. Next slide, please. The first goal of the master plan is around English language proficiency. The goal states that our multilingual learners will develop full receptive and productive proficiencies in English within five to seven years of receiving ELD services as measured by the Summitive English Language Proficiency Assessment, known as the LPAC. To identify the progress that BUSD has made towards this goal, we will now take a look at the 2223 LPAC achievement data. As you can see on the slide before you, each student receives one of four LPAC performance levels. Back one list, please. The four LPAC performance levels are then divided into six progress indicator levels. As this goal states, our work is to ensure that BUSD's multilingual learners who have yet to reclassify are more moving towards language proficiency. As you can see before you, currently 58.1% of all BUSD multilingual learners are making, making progress towards English language proficiency. This rate is eight percent higher than the current state of California average. Important to note, one of our Latinx Resolution elements is reporting on the progress and prioritizing of Latinx success goals. As you can see before you, the next few graphs, next slide, please, illustrate how our non-Spanish speaking multilingual learners are progressing as compared to BUSD's Spanish speaking multilingual learners. At the primary level, 77% of our non-Spanish multilingual learners are making progress towards language proficiency as compared to 70% of our Spanish speaking multilingual learners. As we transition to secondary, next slide, please. We see that the growth declines that in 43% of our non-Spanish speaking multilingual learners are making progress towards language proficiency as compared to 51% of our Spanish speaking multilingual learners. At this point, we do not have the year-over-year progress data to determine if this progress is higher or lower than previous years. However, this data does lift up the fact that our Spanish speaking multilingual learners are making advanced progress in the secondary levels as is the intention of our TWI program. Next slide, please. One component of our multilingual learner progress that we would like to highlight is the workaround supporting our multilingual learners who are duly identified as being a multilingual learner and having an individual education plan or a Section 504 plan. During this school year, we have trained our primary and middle school special education case managers on supporting our multilingual learners and the reclassification process. Next month, we will be doing the same thing with our sped, primary sped case managers. Lastly, and moving forward in support of advancing our multilingual learner progress towards language proficiency, BUSD educators will be using and families will have access to the state's newly released LPAC interim assessment system. Different from the summative LPAC, which occurs at the end of each year, the interim assessments are versatile and can be administered to students in either a benchmark or a formative manner, providing teachers and administrators with data they can use to support teaching and learning throughout those year.
Goal, goal number two is academic success. Quote, "English learners are taught highly rigorous academic content that enables them to meet performance standards in all content areas consistent with those for all students." This goal intersects with Latinx Resolution component, design culturally and linguistically responsive instruction. So with the work of the new Curriculum Instruction Department and the multi-tiered systems of support team, BUSD is making significant strides towards ensuring that our, we have rigorous curriculum in line with the common core state standards. And with collaboration with the different departments, we are working on improving our curriculum and pedagogy to make sure that it affirms and builds upon the diverse backgrounds of our students and at the same time, holding high expectations. So how do we ensure that our multilingual learners have access to this rigorous curriculum? Well, as, oh, go back, please. We're still on that slide. As, how do they have access to this rigorous curriculum as identified by the California ELD State Framework? Well, the key is Integrated ELD, which in essence in BUSD is our constructing meaning program. And through the constructing meaning PD, our secondary general education teachers are learning how to provide access to the curriculum. So the multilingual learners are participating in the same tasks without lowering the rigor of the activities. So I want to give some examples. So for example, they're using a multitude of strategies and one, for example, is close reading. So on the left, you see the image, the students who have participated in, in close reading. They have to, the teacher provides scaffolds and structures so they can learn how to skillfully chunk, annotate, cite and summarize what they read. And then on the right is a image, it's not too clear, but that's of the science notebook of a student at King, a multilingual, multilingual learner at King, who after annotating a text with a partner, they wrote a summary on magnetic force. Next slide.
All right. Well, goal three is focused on family engagement and strong intersection with our Latinx community. And of course, we want to call out that we've recognized not all our multilingual learners are, identify as Latinx and not all Latinx students or families are multilingual learners, but we see a strong overlap and, and common goals there. Creating a safe, welcoming and inclusive climate is not just for our students, but also for our families. In partnership with Latinos Unidos de Berkeley, we have worked we have worked, and the Office of Family Engagement and Equity, we worked to identify several different topics and areas of particular interest in family learning workshops, specifically around, and that turned into, under this broader umbrella of adelante, or Latinx, Latina success, these themes of si soy, or celebrations of who Latinx culture and who they are, si puedo, or building out capacity to get families into, or to support their students' academic success and excellence, as well as to find pathways to college and career success. And then si voy, which is navigating our system and to college and career success. So those have included work with CAVE, a project to inspire, workshops provided by Latinos Unidos de Berkeley and the Office of Family Engagement and Equity explicitly, a partnership with Daybreak Health for mental health-specific family workshops virtually, and a wellness series at Berkeley High School. In addition to that, we've been implementing new policies for translation interpretation and accessing that and expanding access to that at our sites, which includes ASL interpretation, as well as interpretation across multiple languages. Our equity teacher leaders have also done an investigation using the English Learner Roadmap and leveraging tools to do a safe and welcoming assessment, which includes analyzing evidence at each school site of multilingual access and welcoming multilingual learners and families into the space. And then we've put a particular emphasis around developing the leadership skills through ELAC and D-LAC, which includes, of course, our D-LAC is providing input on our LCAP, which is really critical in our LCAP development year this year in particular, as well as our ELACs working, in particular, with our ELD coordinators and our site leaders to inform programs at the school sites. But we've also joined them together in joint meetings with other advisory committees for everyone to partner together and to share voice and advocacy and looking at data and developing leadership skills. And so we really believe that is the next generation of our leaders and the district.
Next slide, please. Goal Four around the master plan is to prepare all our multilingual learners to be college and career-ready. The first part of Goal Four is to monitor the progress of our multilingual learners in an unbiased approach. As a district, we continue to roll out Elevation, not to be confused with Edge Uclimber. Elevation is a web-based platform that allows our educators access to specific multilingual learner data, progress monitoring protocols, and the reclassification system. As a former site administrator, I can speak to the improvements that this tool has made on site teams' ability to review student progress, identify student needs, and collaborate next steps to support our multilingual learners. The second part of Goal Four is to identify students in need of extra support. This component of the goal is aligned with the Latinx Resolution elements of understanding equity gaps and identifying students for tiered interventions. BUSD has rolled out a standardized academic MTSS system whereby all of our students are being assessed and monitored for academic performance. In this system, we are using standardized benchmark assessments to identify students who need additional support and intervention. Upon this identification, our educators are matching students with a tailored academic intervention needed to fill the gaps in their unfinished learning. Once this innovation is provided, we are monitoring progress in a systematized and unbiased manner to ensure that the interventions are efficacious and students are progressing towards identified target learning goals. The last part of this goal includes the use of evidence-based classroom strategies as the first priority to improve learning. BUSD has continued to invest in the building of our teachers' capacity by ensuring that all of our TK to V educators engage in the Five-Day Core Reading Academy. The goal of this professional learning series is to cultivate a shared language and foundational understanding among all of our educators around the essential research-based tenets of reading instruction. By monitoring our student academic progress, identifying students in need of additional support, and using evidence-based instruction, we are working to ensure that all of our multilingual learners are college and career-ready. Moving forward, we will be working to identify specific needs of our newcomer and long-term multilingual learners. We will be investigating curriculum supplements and training needs to ensure that these two multilingual learner subgroups continue to make progress towards their language proficiency. Next slide, please.
Goal number five of our master plan is the implementation of instructional programs for multilingual learners with fidelity. And quote, "The primary goal of the monitoring is to ensure that every school in the district has effective and compliant programs for all multilingual learners." This goal intersects with the Latinx Resolution component of designing culturally and responsive curriculum. So since the approval of the multilingual learner master plan, BUSD is making significant strides towards this school. The main two components of the services for ELD are federally mandated programs of integrated and designated ELD. And the image in the middle is of EL Chiefs Blueprint for Success for Serving Our English Learners, and it explains how these two components, while they're different, their interrelated purposes. So I'd like to touch on a few different areas, actions we've taken since the approval of the plan. First, I'd like to talk about testing. And we're working to ensure that testing doesn't take away from too much instructional time. And so one of the ways we do that is we test all new BUSD students who have the home language survey of other languages than English. We test them over the summer so that we can determine their English language status and ensure proper program placement before the school year starts and not delay ELD instruction. In addition to that, the district will be sending test examiners to the sites to help with the summative LPAC testing in the spring, so we can complete it in a timely manner. And then in terms of professional development, in addition to the Constructing Meaning PD that I talked about, we have the systematic ELD. This is the first time in a decade that all of the ELD teachers are being trained in systematic ELD. And there's been a lot of really positive responses to the PD, and I just want to quote what one teacher said. "I have been teaching ELD at John Muir for four years, and I'm currently being trained in our adopted curriculum systematic ELD. This training has been enlightening despite having used it for the past four years. Not only am I gaining access to many resources, which has lifted my teaching, but I'm also being immersed in the why. This training has clarified so many questions and has given me the opportunity to collaborate with colleagues, practice language protocols, and analyze assessments in student work." And then last spring, as you may know, we purchased more systematic ELD units to make sure that each school site has a complete set of the curriculum. And these units have hands-on materials that are, you can see in the picture, they have vocabulary cards, posters, and other hands-on materials that really are critical to teaching ELD. And now that the ELD teachers are able to deliver the entire scope and sequence of the language and forms and functions at the specific proficiency level of their students. So this is really great. Looking ahead, we are working on identifying and purchasing a supplementary curriculum to better meet the needs of our newcomers. Lastly, I just wanted to mention that the district approved of an increase in LCAP funding for ELD FTE. With this increase in FTE, ELD teachers have more time for doing their duties related to coordinating, such as monitoring students who have been reclassified as fluent English proficient. And then furthermore, as a quote from an ELD teacher, "The increase in FTE has a direct impact on our students. Our multilingual learners are receiving more designated ELD, which translates to more practice using English language functions, which are embedded in academic and social interactions. This designated instruction time is critical for the success for our multilingual learners, and so they're very grateful for that increase in FTE."
All right. And then finally, our goal number six is focused on building out multilingualism and a multilingual community here in Berkeley. We recognize that our students come to us, some of which speaking only one language or more that are not English, some of us only speaking English, and other students that are bilingual or multilingual at the start of their journey. Our goal is to produce as many students by the time they graduate that are multilingual from any of those three categories, regardless of how they enter. One way that we're doing that, of course, is investing in our two-way immersion program at Sylvia Mendez and at Longfellow, a really critical and important program for us. And we want to continue to support that. In particular, Sylvia Mendez has engaged in a partnership with the Center for Applied Linguistics over the past year, which resulted in a lot of professional development and learning and integration around effective strategies for multilingual and two-way immersion programs and a report, and that was actually just released this last week. And further work to come certainly to support that. Beyond that, though, we do have bilingual pathway awards that are awarded at the end of fifth grade, as well as eighth grade, for students to encourage them to continue along the path to multilingualism or bilingualism, that eventually will lead to the seal of biliteracy. And so you can see our data, as we've begun, a small group last year, or two years ago, doubled that last year, and we hope to continue that exponential growth. And again, this is not just for Spanish. This is encouraging all of our students to engage and provide evidence and celebrate their multilingualism across and any of their languages, which might be a heritage language or one that they're learning as a world language by our amazing world language teachers in our high school. And that concludes our presentation. On to questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that presentation. We will start with by President Basadé, and we have five minutes remaining.
Great. Well, thank you so much. I just have a couple of questions about the LPAC, because I know this is a common issue that comes up with families and just the preparation and in the development of the master plan. We talked about how important it was to prepare families and their students for that test. It sounds like, and correct me if I'm understanding this wrong, that there are two touchpoints, right? One in the spring for the summative test, and the other one for the interim assessment. So how does the Office of Family Engagement and Equity, in particular with our Spanish-speaking staff, support family engagement for those two touchpoints of the LPAC test? So that's one question, and then I have two other questions.
So the interim LPAC is primarily for teachers. So I have been training the ELD teachers at the collaboration meetings how to administer the interim LPAC, and it's really exciting because there's two ways they can administer it. There's the standard way, which the student can experience a test-like setting and get practice and build confidence. And then there's also the non-standard way where you could do whole group. Let's practice the speaking section, turn and talk to a partner, or we can look at the rubrics together and have discussions. And so there's going to be a lot of learning and helping to make sure the students understand what's being asked to them on the test, so they can show, truly show what they're capable of. Because there's times when students come to the test, and they don't know what they're supposed to do, and it doesn't reflect really what they're able to do. So that's the interim LPAC. And then we have practice tests, which are available to families, that we will, just like we did last year during the D-LAC and ELACs, we will show the parents how to give their children a practice test at home if they'd like, and it's optional. And the family engagement specialists work with the ELD teachers to support the ELAC in terms of communication.
Yeah, as mentioned earlier, our ELACs and D-LACs have been trained. One of the specific trainings that was provided was understanding what the LPAC is and what it means, which is a critical component. And the fact that we have interim assessments now allows us to better communicate throughout the school year, instead of waiting until the next school year or the end of the school year, what progress is being made, as well as where there's areas of need, which of course is really critical for informing instruction for the teachers, but also is really critical for motivating our students and our families to continue to work towards those goals. And so in partnership with the Curriculum Instruction Department, our family engagement team, both at the site level, as well as supporting resource development and collection and curation at the district level to make sure that we can have access to that information for all of our multilingual learner families.
That's great. And then my second question, and I have one about college and career readiness. My second question has to do with staffing, because I remember last year, I mean, after we approved the master plan, there was a big advocacy push, both from D-LAC and from Latinos Unidos de Berkeley, to increase ELD staffing. And I think teachers also came and spoke about the importance of increasing staffing so that they're able to implement the plan with fidelity. How are we doing this year? Are there any gaps in staffing, either at the secondary or elementary school level? How is staffing going for ELD teachers?
I think in regards to what Ms. Marte referenced, we are seeing a lot more opportunity with the increased FTE and overall, a lot of appreciation towards the Board of Education, and then thinking about our LCAP this year, thinking about what is still missing. Right now, we are sort of in the needs analysis stage of thinking about this as we engage our stakeholders, as we hit the mid-year part of this year. So we feel good about where we're at with the increases, and we're very appreciative of it. And then we can get back to you with next steps on what is still missing.
Great. Thank you. Other directors?
Just so from my understanding, students can test out of the multilingual program if they like. Is that true? So I was just wondering, because I actually do have a couple classmates and friends that did do that, and I was wondering if there are any support mechanisms for students who would like to do that, like once they've transferred out in, like trying to adjust into the native speaker classrooms? Are there support mechanisms for that?
To make sure I understand your question, you're wondering what kind of support there are for students who have exited the ELD program? Well, students who have exited the ELD program, they're classified as reclassified fluent English proficient students. And we monitor them for four years. And so we look at their data. Right now, the ELD teachers are working with other staff to look at the data and see if they're meeting state benchmarks. And then if they are not meeting state benchmarks, they look at close detailed data, see, okay, well, why not, and what type of intervention they might need, and then they're offered interventions.
Great. Thank you. I have a question on your slide where you said that you are monitoring progress in an unbiased approach. What does that mean specifically?
I would mean that the assessments that we're using are normed either on a national scale or a state scale, and it would not be an assessment that our educators are necessarily just coming up with. So it's something that has been research-backed and has been proven that this is an assessment that can be used across subgroups and given a result that we think is valid and can be used as a judgment on where students are in their proficiency.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. My second question was around reclassification. I learned at the town hall meeting last year around the Latinx Resolution that our students, unless they are reclassed, it keeps many of them from taking the traditional A through G classes and impacts their ability to be accepted into college. And so I'm wondering, are there any advocacy efforts to change that? Because we know that that exam, while it may be important, it may not mean that they can't actually meet the challenges of our regular A through G English classes. And so I'm really concerned about that and wondering why that is, and if there are any advocacy issues we could do to kind and keep that as a barrier from them reaching those A through G goals.
I could speak to some of the advocacy efforts, and I think that's why we purposely highlighted the work that we are trying to think about whether it pertains to our students who have IEPs or Section 504 plans, because very often, students who are duly identified are the ones that get stuck in EL services, right? And despite maybe being in Berkeley since kindergarten, thinking about what additional services or what advocacy needs to be provided to ensure that these students, once they... to ensure that these students, once they, once they get to high school, that they have all the options available. And these students are certainly ones that sometimes those options become limited. So that's why we're trying to work with our case managers and our Section 504 coordinators on ensuring that they understand the supports that our multilingual language learners need, but also what are the reclassification processes through the IEP or through the 504? And then also mentioned in the presentation, just thinking a little bit about more about our long-term English language learners. We also see, you saw it in the data, when it gets to the secondary level, sometimes some of our students stop making that progress. And with that, you know, they're potentially prevented. I don't know the specifics of like what classes they are allowed to take and what classes they are, they can't take when they're still receiving ELD at the high school, if anybody wants to jump in on that. But I do think that's something that we are continuing to think about specifically for these groups that seem to stop making progress at that point.
I'm not aware of any restriction from taking any classes because you're an ELD. I think that it might be a matter of if there's room in their schedule. So I know, for example, the students who are in the, they call it the MLP program. These are usually newcomers. They have two classes of ELD a day. And so one is focused on the improving the English language proficiency at their level, and then the other is more sort of an integrated approach. But because of those two classes, they might have less flexibility. But there isn't, that I know of, I'm gonna, I made a note of it, and I'm gonna ask the MLP coordinator to get more information, and we could get back to you.
Great. Thank you. Director Chang, did you have a question?
No, just a follow-up. Firstly, thank you for all the efforts here. It's really important, of course. Was I mishearing? I thought that the elevator program is in place that helps. Can you explain that a little bit?
Elevation?
Elevation. Elevation in terms of what role that plays in the, in the multilingual learner process. Thanks.
Okay, so you could think of, are you familiar with SACE? Or, so it's, it's kind of like a one-stop shop. So SACE, for those of you who don't know, is the platform for data and IEPs for students with IEPs. Well, elevation is like a one-stop shop for data for students who are, are multilingual learners. And so it has all the data there, and it's very user-friendly. And we can view everything, including, you know, how long they've been in the country. And and then there's meetings that are in the platform. So instead of the old brick and mortar format for doing process like reclassification or off-front monitoring, where we're, you know, sending papers back and forth through the site and the district, it's all online now, everything, the forms are online and everything. And so it streamlines everything. Does that help answer your question?
Great. Thank you. Parents have, I'm sorry.
I would also say a big part of it that I think is beneficial is the collaboration that it builds between educators at the site and also educators at the district office. So for example, when a student has reached reclassification criteria, they're meeting the standards either on their grades, their STAR assessment, their SBA assessment and their LPAC assessment. Then the site educators are coming together to have those conversations and really looking at all those assessments and all those data points. And then once those are signed, they head off to Kathleen and myself. And then we have another set of eyes on looking over everything, making sure that the students' benchmarks are being cleared to this, to that level. And then, you know, after that, thinking about how do we celebrate our students for this accomplishment? That is a really big deal. So it's, it's much more than a platform, right? It's a, it's a way of building collaboration and many other things.
And I'm assuming it's an internal program. Is there, is no parental access to the system, elevator system? Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will wrap up with Vice President Basadé.
I just have one last question. And we talked about college and career readiness. And so at the high school level, do we know which programs or extracurricular activities our ELD students are taking a part in that are, that are helping them get into college? How do we survey the parents, or how do we evaluate success for those kind of activities that are geared towards helping them get in, get into college?
You know, I don't, we don't have that data right now to share, but I think it's really important to investigate. Certainly, there, we know that there are a wide range of programs. We actually have been tagging our students in our education, our educator platform to understand which, which different types of programs, including RISE and Bridge and PUNTE that folks are taking, and we can disaggregate that by language status. So it's something that we can certainly investigate more about to see where, what patterns come up.
I also know just with our CTE program, there's been an increase in students who particularly are African-American and Latinx students who are taking STEM pathway programs. And Win Skills has a lot of that data, so we can share that with you, too.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this update. I'm sure this is giving us all a lot of pride. We are grateful that not only have we passed this plan, but now we see progress towards implementing it. So thank you all so much for your hard work. Next, we will have our AC Transit discussion item. Thank you all so much for, for coming, for being here, and for the many ways in which, when we raise issues for our students and families around public transportation, that you solve them.
President Babett and Board of Directors and the folks who are still left here in our audience, I am happy to introduce this presentation to you all. An example of one of the many partnerships we have with our CBOs and particularly the city. We're going to hear a presentation from AC Transit, and we are exclusively hearing from AC Transit because we understand the AC Transit is a means of transportation for many of our students and families. We know that BUSC has a campaign around attendance, and if our babies are not in school, they're not able to engage in the rich discussion and conversations and instruction that's happening in our classrooms. We also know that we've heard from several students and families that there is questions, concerns, and sometimes confusion around bus routes and what bus to take and what time. And so we know this partnership is critical. And so we were excited to start a conversation with Mr. Ryan and his team just to kind of start to brainstorm and think about it. And coincidentally, they're also in the process of rethinking and realigning the services they provide, not just to our Berkeley students and families, but to the larger city of Berkeley. You know, sorry, the city of Berkeley, the larger city of Berkeley. And so this evening, they're here to share with you all, and most importantly, to share with our community, their work around realignment, as well as to share some of their engagement efforts to really get input from students and families about future bus routes. And so again, this is for, for your benefit, but definitely to the benefit of folks who are in the audience and listening as well. And we hope that you will partake in the engagement events that are going to be shared in the future. So with that, Mr. Ryan, there you go.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, President Babett, Vice President Basadé, Board members, Superintendent Ford Mortel, staff and members of the public. My name is Ryan Lau, External Affairs Representative at AC Transit, joined here with my planning colleague, Samah Itani, here to talk about Realign, which is basically AC Transit's efforts to redesign the service around the wake of the And today I will provide a high-level overview, and then I'll turn it over to Samah to sort of do a deeper dive. Next slide, please. So just for reference, AC Transit is the largest public bus-only transit system in the state of California, providing lifeline service to essential workers, students, teachers as well, I'm sure, low-income individuals, seniors, commuters, individuals with disabilities, and anyone wishing to reduce their carbon footprint. We operate in the East Bay from Richmond, San Pablo, all the way down to Newark and Fremont. We, our riders, rather, are 65% low-income, 75% people of color, 43% do not have access to a working vehicle, meaning they use our service to access work, school, go to the grocery store, and just generally conduct their day-to-day activities. Next slide, please. So this, you probably can't read it all, but it's the current service that exists as, at, at this time today in the city of Berkeley. Red lines are most frequent, running every 20 minutes or better along San Pablo, Solano Avenue, University Avenue, College, Telegraph, Martin Luther King, and around campus. Routes in blue are every 30 minutes or better. And then finally, the ones in gray vary in frequency, in frequency. Those are transbay routes, early bird service, which is basically our service that helps Bart do early morning rail maintenance, and then overnight owl service. Next slide, please. And so what is Realign? Realign is our evaluation of how our service network works and where it goes, how often it's running, days of the week it's running, and the times of the day it's running. Next slide, please. Why are we doing this? Primarily because transportation patterns in the region have changed pretty dramatically in the wake of the pandemic. Ridership's back up to 75% of pre-pandemic levels, but we are facing some pretty serious challenges. One big one is hiring and retention of our bus operators, which are drivers as well. And you probably heard this in the news all the time, funding and revenue going forward. Next, next slide, please. So we are in Phase Three of our Realign. In August, we showed the board and the, the public all of the information, the feedback that we've gotten in the first few phases of this project. And so that has fed into Phase Three, which is a draft network proposals that we want you to take a look at and provide feedback today. And we will be gathering additional feedback all the way through mid-April, which will finally adopt a final plan. And then in summer of 2024, we'll be developing new service standards. And then we have a go-live date with implementation in August 2024. Next slide, please. And so as I mentioned, we had two phases before this where we developed guiding principles that, that informed the way that we drafted these proposals. Equity, reliability, frequency. Equity is ensuring that our service meets the needs of equity priority communities. Reliability is pretty self-explanatory. It means the buses come when they're supposed to, and then frequency, meaning that our buses are coming often. Next slide, please. And, oh, sorry. And it is important to note that those are not mutually exclusive, the guiding principles. And so I'll hand it off to Samah to do a deeper dive.
Thank you, Ryan. Can you hear me? All right. So we have, we have three draft scenarios. Two of these scenarios are cost-neutral, and one is a visionary scenario. Next slide, please. So first up is the balanced coverage scenario. The scenario seeks to keep coverage everywhere in the service area it exists today and expand in a few places. Next slide, please. This is the frequent cost-neutral scenario. It seeks to provide a fast, frequent network with no line running less often than every 30 minutes. Next slide, please. This is the unconstrained scenario. General summary of the scenario is more of everything, everywhere. This is a visionary scenario. While AC Transit does not have the resources in terms of buses, operators, or funding to achieve this vision today, it can be used to advocate for more resources and represents our vision of what's possible when funding for public transit is a priority. Next slide, please. Now let's get to some of the key lines that serve Berkeley. We'll dig into a few highlights here, but please note there's much more detail on the website at actransit.org/realign, including profiles of each line, maps, and an interactive tool that allows you to make comments on specific lines. Next slide, please. One of the most significant changes to the system is how Line 6 and 51 work together. Currently, Line 51A and 51B meet each other at Rockridge, and customers riding through need to transfer. We are proposing to extend Line 51A the whole way along College and terminate it where Line 6 currently ends in downtown Berkeley, covering half of current Line 51B. We propose extending Line 6 along University Avenue to Berkeley Amtrak. This will allow for more one-seat rides between Berkeley and Oakland. These lines would run every 12 minutes in the balanced cover scenario and every 10 minutes in the frequent scenario. Next slide, please. Line 72, 72M, and 72R currently run along San Pablo Avenue from downtown Oakland to the city of San Pablo. One of the key things we've heard is that having three separate lines on this corridor can be confusing. In response, we are proposing to have two routes on San Pablo, Line 72 and 72M. Instead of Line 72R, we are proposing that it be combined with Line 72 and 72M. This means that Line 72 and 72M will now come every 15 minutes or a seven, seven and a half minute combined frequency instead of every 30 minutes. We're also going to space out bus stops out more so that buses can come in on time and be within comfortable walking distance. Instead of rapid, think reliable. We're planning this corridor with ACTC's San Pablo Corridor Project in mind, and our goal isn't to remove service, but rather increase frequency and reliability. Next slide, please. Line 7 currently operates every 30 minutes and serves Arlington, North Shattuck, and Emeryville Amtrak via Ashby Avenue. We are proposing serving Emeryville Amtrak via Stanford Avenue. Line F currently also runs along much of this routing every 30 minutes for a combined, combined 15-minute service. You can see where both Line F and Line 7 run parallel to each other by the orange and blue lines. Ashby service will be provided by new Line 27. Next slide, please. Line 52 is proposed to run every 15 minutes and starts at Albany Village, then travels via San Pablo Avenue to Cedar Street and makes a loop around UC Berkeley. The proposal is to extend Line 52 straight down Cedar Street to provide direct crosstown service from Albany Village to UC Berkeley Campus and North Shattuck. This is shown in the green line on the map that runs through north Berkeley. Next slide, please. The new Line 27 replaces current Line 79 service along Calusa Avenue. Line 27 is proposed to run every 30 minutes from El Cerrito Plaza Bart Station along Calusa to downtown Berkeley, Ashby Avenue, Emeryville Amtrak, taking over the Ashby section from current Line 7. In addition, Line 36 would be extended to cover the southern portion of current Line 79. Next slide, please. Line 29 currently serves Lake Merritt, downtown Oakland, West Oakland, and Emeryville every 20 minutes. We are proposing to reduce its, its frequency to every 30 minutes and use those resources to extend the line along Alcatraz to provide new service where we don't have any today. This will fill in a crosstown gap in this part of the service area. Next slide, please. Line 18 currently starts at Albany Village and travels via Solano Avenue, MLK Way, and Market Street to Lake Merritt Bart Station. The proposal is to extend the Line 18 up to Montclair, as shown by the purple line on the map, with service every 15 minutes. Their route will continue to serve Albany Village and Solano Avenue. In addition, Line 88 will be extended to Piedmont. Together, Lines 18 and 88 will replace Line 33. Next slide, please. Line 12 is proposed to run every 20 minutes. Most of the route will stay the same, but we are proposing to extend service from Gilman down Sixth Street to Berkeley Marina, as shown by the red line on the map. This is to provide access to Fourth Street Business District and the Berkeley Marina waterfront. Next slide, please. Line 65 and 67 provide service to Berkeley Hills every 40 and 30 minutes, respectively. They will remain as-is in the balanced scenario, but in the frequent scenario, they are consolidated and some coverage is lost to free up resources for a system-wide 30-minute standard. Next slide, please. In the cost-constrained scenarios, we are proposing to lengthen some lines to allow for increased frequency and to preserve coverage. In addition, we are proposing adding service on Alcatraz and part of Stanford Avenue. Finally, we are providing a consistent one-seat ride to Oakland on Line 6 and 51. The additional frequency in the frequent service scenario is made possible by reducing coverage in the Berkeley Hills. Next slide, please. Here's what the scenarios look like in terms of the number of lines in each frequency category. This is a broad overview of some of the changes in Berkeley. But again, there are more details on our website, actransit.org/realign. And now I'd like to hand it off to my colleague, Ryan, to talk about Phase Three engagement. Thank you.
So that was a lot. I think it's important to, to note that it's not all balance or all frequency. It, it's like a buffet. You can sort of mix and match. So if there's something in there that you don't like, let us know. We'll, we'll evaluate that. So if there's something in there that you don't like, let us know. We'll evaluate that, figure out what makes the most sense. But so we do want you to provide your feedback. Let us know what you think. Are we serving all the markets that you think that we should? Are we missing anything? But above that, you guys might all ride the buses, but your school communities are really the people that we want to focus on because those are the people that are going to be most deeply impacted by these changes. And I forgot to say next slide. One more, please. And so we have a variety of different digital and in-person opportunities for feedback. I was here just yesterday at the Berkeley Council. I'm going to be at the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee tomorrow. And then I get to skip a week, and then I'm back in Berkeley all over again for the entire following week. But as you can see, we have twenty-plus pop-ups. We have thirty-plus city council meetings and school board meetings. We're working with CBOs. One thing that I did want to flag for you is we have a community virtual workshop coming up on December seventh. You can definitely find more about that on our website. We plugged it enough, but actransit.org/realign. We also, because we want to make sure that it's accessible to everybody and not just the people that are comfortable with like the digital format, we have twenty libraries throughout the service area that are hosting a big, basically a booklet of all of our route profiles that we're promoting, or we're proposing, rather, in three languages, English, Spanish, and Chinese. We also have an opportunity to provide written feedback. We're going to be collecting those routinely and feeding that into the rest of the input that we're getting. I also have take ones. So if you have constituents that, you know, you're out at the school sites and you want to pass them out for us, please do. And happy to answer any questions. Next slide, please. And that's not what I was looking for, but this is a list of all the different tactics that we're utilizing that I already mentioned. And next slide. There we go. So Samad is pitch hitting today. So I cover this geography, and Carissa Lee is our service planner that covers this area. So if you have any questions, feel free to contact us directly. And now I can take questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate these details and that you came to us so that our community can be well-informed ahead of time. Definitely like your visionary statement, more of everything, everywhere. I'm trying to get my superintendent to adopt that instead of we can do anything but can't do everything. Can we switch? But seriously, I did notice around the Seventy-two R and the Seventy-two, Seventy-two M. So my experience of the Seventy-two R is that it didn't stop as many times as just the blanket Seventy-two or because it was Seventy-two rapid. Are we still going to have that rapid or will it take, will it come more frequently but actually take longer because it's stopping and more stops?
So actually, for the, that's actually a great question. So for the Seventy-twos, it will be the Seventy-two and the Seventy-two M. And so it's kind of, it's going to kind of take on like a hybrid of the Seventy-twos and the Seventy-two R. So our hope is to reduce the amount of stops, like how Seventy-two R now stops less frequently, but it is more frequent. So the combination of the Seventy-two and Seventy-two M will create a seven and a half minute. So every seven and a half minutes, there will be a bus. So it's going to be more, a little more frequent than we'd expect, but we're still working on what stops those would be. But it's in the hopes that there will be more frequency even without the Seventy-two R.
And I will just jump in. I think the other thing that we accomplish in this scenario is more regular spacing, so more reliable service. So you're not getting a five-minute frequency one time and then a ten-minute frequency the next time. You get a seven and a half minute all the time. And then with respect to the ACTC San Pablo project, if they do end up delivering a transit-only lane, it's going to make, it's going to make a Seventy-two R a little bit challenging because that would mean if you're passing bus stops, then you're having to move around the buses that are in the transit lane. And so it just, it becomes a little bit crazy.
That makes sense. One other question. Not sure if our schools or the map of our schools have been provided to you or if it's something that you already looked up, but I'm hoping that in an offline conversation with our Transportation Department, we can ensure that these changes still line up with our school start and end times so that those changes on our routes that we're aware of and we're able to either front-load our community as well as front-load you all with information, which may improve that goal.
Yeah, I think definitely it's top of mind to maintain the buses that do service the schools to maintain being there during school hours, like in the morning and in the afternoons for pickup and drop-off.
Great. Thank you, Director Shunaski, and then Vice President Vassadav. Yeah, just one thing really quickly. So I rode AC Transit when I lived in Oakland for the entire time I was in grad school, and it was great. And I stopped because I had a couple of kids, and it became really cumbersome and really hard and also irregular. And I really do think that public transportation is one of the keys to the climate crisis. And I'm wondering, so my question now, those are all comments. My question now is, what can we do to help support you? Because I think we need more ridership. We need to bring it back up and make AC Transit, you know, more robust and more frequently used. So I know we can hand out your flyers. Is there anything else we can do to support the system and the changes?
So this, this kind of feedback is going to be useful. So as I mentioned, transportation patterns have changed dramatically. And so we are used to providing service in the AM peak, the PM peak, five days a week. And so that's not how people move around anymore. And so the feedback that you all give us and your school communities give us is going to be critical to provide the service that's useful to them. And so I think that's one of the big pieces that we need to consider is how people are using the service today.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I definitely have ideas on how to increase ridership. I think it's critical that we engage with our transit-dependent population, which includes our middle school and high school students. And so two lines that I'm particularly concerned about that I hear about already, and so it concerns me to reduce services, the Line Sixty-five and Line Sixty-seven, which serves a lot of students from the hills coming to Berkeley High. We, as a district, have also had to cut back service in the hills. And so I know that families, particularly when students are making transit decisions on their own, right, middle school and high school really rely on the Sixty-five and Sixty-seven. So I would encourage you to engage with our PTAs, definitely email the district. And I can talk to the superintendent about creative ways that we can reach out to our own communities. But I think a student survey could be really important, too, particularly at the high school. And I know that in other cities, like in San Francisco, the MTA has launched an event called Transit Week where they're working really closely with the schools on increasing ridership. So I think there's a lot of potential for us to better partner before making calls, particularly on the Sixty-five and Sixty-seven. I think, you know, putting in those changes without engaging our high school community, I think will probably result in a lot of community blowback. So just wanted to flag that. Thanks. Yeah, thanks so much for that feedback. We're definitely going to share that back with the team.
And sorry, you said engage with, and then you used an acronym that I'm unfamiliar with.
I say with.
Parent Teacher Association.
Oh, the Parent Teacher Association.
Okay.
Berkeley High, it's the PTSA, right?
Yes, and Vice President Vassadav, we also have shared this information and the presentation with all of our site leaders with the hope that they're going to put that in their school communications as well so that you can get a big turnout at those various engagement sessions. But the survey idea is another great idea as well.
And the PTA Council, too. I'd say like we could share with our sites, but really the parents are, the parents are going to be on this. Like, they really care how their kids are going to, you know, get to school. And so I think we can find creative ways to also share with our constituents as board members.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you. And I will just highlight, so these events are great ways to sort of highlight what we're doing. But because it's such dense material, I think doing it sort of offline is really the way to be able to really digest all of this information and provide some really thoughtful feedback. So just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And again, I do appreciate that every time I've reached out, you've come back with the solution. So I thank you so much for your hard work. Let's give them a round of applause, people. All right. So now it's time for extended public comment. But so that the board can be fresh and hear you well, if you would just give us five minutes to have a bathroom break and reshift, I would greatly appreciate it. So we're going to take a six-minute break. Thank you so much.
I was thinking that, too.
Go get it if I can. No more. Thank you.
All right. If you could take your seats, we will begin. I'm going to try and do twenty minutes. Um, and hopefully I can get through most of you if you honor the one minute. And if you honor lining up, so you're right behind the other, that always helps to move us along. Um, um, and I'm just not going to try this online thing. We'll just deal with those who are here. I'm sorry. If you're online, please just email us your comments. Okay, so we're gonna do one minute. We're gonna start with Christina Harb, followed by Kevin H., followed by Julie Surley.
Can I ask for an extra ten seconds? Because I'd like to also have a moment of silence. We've lost a lot of people in the last month.
I I appreciate that, but I have to be fair with everyone. So.
You gave a moment of silence a month ago, and I think that we've lost a lot of people in the last month, and I would really like to do it.
You can do that as a part of your minute. You can do that as part of your minute.
Okay, I'm gonna take note of that. Um, let's do a quick moment of silence. We have lost twelve thousand, almost twelve thousand Palestinians in Gaza. Forty-five hundred of them are kids. And we just, many people in the community have just spent a month seeing on their Instagram feeds that mutilation every day. And we need to acknowledge that and humanize Palestinians. There's nothing controversial about doing that. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna quickly just say that your silence on this topic is complicity. It is violent against Arab Americans and Muslim Americans. Uh, as voters, as taxpayers, all of us are complicit in political decisions that our government is making and supporting a genocide. And it is a genocide. It is ethnic cleansing. This has been determined by the United Nations. It's hypocritical that you have United Against Hate Week, you have resolutions about everyone, you hang these flags up behind you, and you can't say even a single word about Palestinians and their suffering. Anti-Semitism is not anti-Zionism, and I want to make that extremely clear, that you cannot fall and believe political pressure, that anti-Zionism is anti-Semitism because this is false.
Thank you, Ms. Harb. Your time is up.
Is not anti-Semitic.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like for everyone to honor the same decorum that we asked in the beginning of the meeting. You may go forward.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Kevin. I currently live and work in Berkeley. My demands tonight are simple and clear. One, support and protect teachers who talk about Palestine. Two, include Palestine in ethnic studies. Three, support and protect Arab and Muslim youth. Yes, people are mourning the fourteen hundred Israeli citizens who were brutally murdered on October seventh. Yes, anti-Semitism is a real growing threat that members of our community are facing. But anti-Zionism is not anti-Semitism. And what, are we gonna simply ignore the ten thousand plus children that have been martyred over the past thirty-nine days? Who have nowhere to go or seventy-five years of military occupation? How does that make any sense? The road to peace and prosperity in the Middle East will take time, that's for sure. But BUSD must break its silence. You can take real tangible steps right here, right now. You can decide to teach the full history and use your position of power to call for a ceasefire. Back now in free Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, after her, we will hear from Hillary Kilamunk, Kilamick, sorry if I said that incorrectly, followed by Shirley Litman, followed by Offer Grimbech.
I'm Julie Searle. I'm reading a statement from Berkeley High teacher Erin Smith, who had to leave. Erin writes, I am the advisor for the Muslim Student Union at Berkeley High, and I teach in the multilingual program. As you likely know, the multilingual program supports newcomer students who have recently arrived in the United States. Many of our students are refugees and have fled from political strife, wars, and trauma. They are an amazing group of students and make our community so much better and are genuinely excited to get to know their American peers. These students come to our school with many strengths, hopes, and dreams. It breaks my heart that I have heard stories from some of my students about anti-Arab and anti-Muslim hate speech they've experienced at school and in the city of Berkeley at large. My students have been, have reported being called terrorists in the hallways. Students have reported their peers yelling and gestating them in the halls, mocking their religion. They report feeling apprehensive about wearing cultural and religious dress like a bias to school. Take a strong and vocal stand.
Thank you. You can email us those comments. And I just want to remind everyone, when you hear the buzzer, that means finish your sentence. Thank you.
Shirley's not here. I'm taking her time.
Oh, oh, you are. Sorry. I'm sorry.
This is part of why I'm asking you all to line up when I call your name. Hillary, followed by Shirley, followed by Offer. There's just one minute I'm asking you to stand to be ready.
My name is Hillary Kilamick. I'm a Berkeley resident, parent to three BUSD Jewish students, currently attending King and VHS. Given that we're in Unity Week, I feel I must call out what is happening. I'm deeply troubled by the misinformation and hateful rhetoric that is being perpetuated in VHS, both by teachers and students in the name of justice and free speech. My kids have to hear their teachers and classmates calling for a free Palestine from the river to the sea. That's not a call for justice, nor is it a call for peace. It is a genocidal call to do away with the Jewish people. Is this in the spirit of unity? Justice will not come by teaching kids to blindly point a finger at Israel for all of Gaza's ills. Justice will not come to Palestinians if facts such as Hamas being an oppressive terror organization committed to Jewish genocide are swept under the carpet so as not to muddy the Israel as oppressor false narrative. When classroom discussions are based on a lie that Israel is an apartheid state, our children are being done a disservice. Roughly twenty percent of Israeli citizens are Arab, and they enjoy the same freedoms as every other Israeli citizen. This is not apartheid. Students.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shirley. I have three kids in BUSD elementary, middle, and high school. All right, I prepared something, but I'm going to respond to things I heard tonight. I've heard a lot about academic freedom and disagreement in class, but there has to be a distinction between academic freedom and presenting posters or chanting slogans that justify violently, violently targeting persons on the basis of their ethnicity or national background. Pictures of Palestinians throwing stones hung on the doors of classrooms justify violence towards Israelis because that is who these stones are targeted at, regardless of who that person is. Chanting from the river to the sea, Palestine will be free, is calling for the abolition of Israel because that is the geography of the region. And yet, school district leaders continuously speak of academic freedom, but do not openly condemn expressions that are acts of acts that are hateful and are not aligned with a nonviolent discourse. Lastly, discussing the Israel-Palestinian conflict when all blame is turned towards one side cannot present a balanced conversation within the classroom. And while your support for your teachers is admirable, this support cannot be unequivocal with no room for to monitor them.
Thank you. After Offer, we will hear from Emma Kinzben Bart. Oh, thank you. He wrote, or they wrote the pronunciation, Kanichikower. Emma, and then followed by Ara.
Good evening, board members. My name is.
Come forward, Emma, please, line up. Sorry.
My name is Offer Grimbeck. I have three children, and I'm a BUSD parent. I want to talk about how recent events have made it harder for my kids to access the curriculum with BUSD. On October seventh, the world became a worse place. An organized group of thousands of well-armed Hamas terrorists invaded Israel and violently murdered over fourteen hundred people and kidnapped over two hundred and thirty more. Two things have happened since. The first is an attempt to dismiss and discount these vile actions. The claim is that these actions are in response to decades of occupation. I'm not blind to the suffering of the Palestinian people. Their pain is real. But any attempt to erase the horrific acts of October seven is disturbing and should be met with skepticism. The second thing that is happening is the offensive course of action taken by some groups. They are using the genuine people of the Palestinian people in a way to land and inflict pain on Jewish and Israeli students right here, right now. They are doing it by coming into the schools and spreading a false, one-sided narrative. The Jews and Israelis are the sole source of Palestinian suffering. Thank you.
Ara, after Emma, please come forward. Nita, please come forward.
Um, okay, first off, I'm Jewish and I'm anti-Zionist. That's a thing. That exists. Uh, this is a poem I wrote. Everywhere with bombs, like I could write it anyway. A poem that'd cleave your souls just enough for a word to climb out your gasping chests, the word genocide. I think you feel it there, that thing with jagged knuckles tearing at the box you put your soul in when you pick up the news. Genocide behind bomb, 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 and warn them to evacuate to nowhere. Genocide, because you don't know what nekbe means and murder. Genocide, because it's the least violent word to describe, like I could write it anyway to describe. Occupations squirming like smoke out of dead children's lungs. Five thousand children's lungs, about ten thousand parents mourning, less than that because they're dead. Bomb, 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 escape routes bombed, dreams bombed like hospitals, and genocide still makes you itchy. My great uncle, aunts, and cousins dream on settlements.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate your poem.
Shoot for double stolen land.
I need you to honor the time like everyone else. And audience members, I appreciate your support, but that's actually not helpful.
Hello. Thank you, guys, for hearing our comments. A two-sides approach to teaching any topic, especially Palestine, is reductive. It reduces Palestinians to a party in a dispute with Israel, and it erases everything else about them, their long, beautiful, and rich history that predates the Israeli occupation, their contributions to society in countries around the world, and the diversity of their human facets. And just like we can't teach Black history as the history of slavery, Palestinians are much more than their relationship with Israel. The two-sides approach is reductive because it collapses all the differences amongst Palestinians into one and all the differences amongst Israelis into one, and often wrongly lumped into Jews, into the Israeli side, which is not true. Jews do not stand with Israel. Free Palestine.
Thank you. Nita? Oh. I'm sorry. Did I miss, uh, Ara then? A U R A is what it says. Now you don't something. I'm sorry. Okay, maybe they're not here. Uh, Marty, followed by Mikel, followed by Rona.
Much to say. I appreciate the last teacher's comments because it just showed true colors. There is no intent to show or teach a true, open, two-sided, comprehensive narrative. This is an intent to do political indoctrination following a personal political bias opinion of these teachers. I mean, she just said it. I couldn't have said it better. Um. Another hypocrisy. Matt and I read the opening paragraph of your policy six one four four. He stopped talking about academic freedom, et cetera. Let me just finish his sentence. He stopped before the following sentence. The, in public schools, policy on controversial issues is defined in the terms of the rights of students rather than in the terms of rights of teachers. That's where he stopped. He didn't write this. He hypocrisy. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is McKell Emanuel Shon. I grew up in Berkeley and attended King and Berkeley High. I currently live and work in Berkeley, and I'm a dual American and Israeli citizen, and so is my husband and my, and our children. I plan to send my children to Berkeley Public Schools, but in light of the recent rise of anti-Semitism within BUSD, I'm seriously having second thoughts. I'm continuing to hear about very disturbing situations that are happening in classrooms and on campus by students, and even worse, by teachers who are pushing their political beliefs in anti-Semitic and anti-Israel agendas into the classroom and on campus. I will not put my children into environments where their mental and physical safety and well-being is not prioritized and that anti-Semitism and anti-Israel rhetoric is not called out immediately and dealt with. And I'm confident that I speak for others who are unfortunately too scared to be here by allowing an unapproved curriculum.
Thank you.
I have an eighth grader, a King and a Berkeley High grad, and we have a loved one being held hostage by Hamas. We are praying for him and for all innocent citizens in Israel and in Gaza. There is indescribable grief on both sides. This is Unity Week at Berkeley schools. It does not create unity to deny either side's pain. Teachers who address the conflict should present a balanced history of both peoples, Israelis and Palestinians, who have both lived in the Holy Land since ancient times. This is not colonization or other simplistic narratives. Words like genocide and ethnic cleansing are Hamas propaganda, repeated by people who learn their history from TikTok and leads to anti-Semitism that we see across this country. Calling for Intifada is hate speech. I lived in Israel during the last Intifada, when suicide bombers and other terrorist attacks massacred scores of civilians. Students should not have to see Intifada posters, hear their teachers demonize Israel, or present a one-sided history.
Thank you. Rona, followed by Rafi, followed by Leila. And then the last one is Russell.
Evening. My name's Rafi Esterson. Uh, one of my children at Berkeley High has asked for their name not to be mentioned, but Principal Coleman knows of the event, uh, made a presentation during their ethnic studies class about Jewish contributions to American Christmas music. And following the presentation, they, uh, uh, noticed on one of the desks, um, someone had written the title of their presentation, and then someone else had, uh, crossed out the word Jewish and written free, free Palestine on it. Um, I have no objection to students making political comments. In fact, I encourage it when it's in the correct place, uh, but this is problematic for two reasons. One, there is the attribution of events going on in Israel and Palestine to Jews, um, which.
Sorry, you can email us at boardofbid@berkeley.net. Rafi, followed by Leila. Oh, okay, so Leila.
Yep, I am. There's a Leila. I'm Leila. Thank you. My name is Leila. I'm a former educator turned PhD candidate where I study this history, and I receive death threats for it on the regular. I have firsthand experience dealing with bias in education surrounding the Middle East, and it has fostered a concern for our safety and internalized beliefs that come from the questioning of whether or not we are human. It is my hope that the experiences that I had and that my students had is finally put to an end. In a mass genocide that uses religion as a weapon, apoliticism is anything but apolitical. Schools should not be catering to making oppressors comfortable at the cost of those most marginalized. You have the opportunity to make these students feel seen in a world that has villainized and invisibilized them. And I urge you to rectify this, and by doing so, signal to your community that your mission matches your practice. Thank you.
Just for clarity's sake, did, did Rona go?
All right. Uh, Russell Bates here. Uh, although anti-Zionism is not anti-Semitism, Zionism is turned into the modern-day Nazism. What is going on against the people of Palestine right now? I, I saw an example of the hate crime on June eighth, nineteen sixty-seven, five months after I enlisted in the Navy, when the Zionist entity bombed the USA's liberty, killing thirty-plus American sailors and Marines, wounding a hundred and seventy-plus sailors and Marines. The same kind of hate crime that's going on against the people of Gaza right now. That's a hate crime. Five thousand kids killed. They can't be on Zoom watching these meetings. They've been killed. They've been murdered by American bombs. by American bombs, dropped by American planes, blown by, um, American-trained Israeli pilots. It's not right. You need to do something about that. You need to introduce educating people about Palestine in the public schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Russell is our last speaker. Is there a Russell still here? Okay, I guess we're done then. Is it in a card? I don't have it. Um, I promised my board colleagues I would go till ten o'clock. Um, so we are now at ten o'clock. Okay, one more minute, guys. Thank you.
Thank you for this time. Um, my name's Daniel. I have two kids in the BUSD, and I just wanted to address just a moment. The labeling of apartheid is both unfairly and inaccurately labeling Israel in an attempt to delegitimize it. To teach it in a class, as an ethnic studies VHS teacher recently did, writing on their whiteboard, to what extent should Israel be considered an apartheid state, along with an attempt to personalize genocidal chants from the river to the sea is expressly violation, expressly violates this board's own policy on controversial issues insofar as promotion of a political agenda. To be clear, Arab Israelis make up twenty percent of Israel's population, vote, have political parties and representatives in the Knesset, and occupy positions of acclaim, including on the Supreme Court. Arab patients along, lie alongside Jewish patients in Israeli hospitals, receiving identical treatment. None of this was possible under South African apartheid. All of these interest instances were expressly and prohibited under apartheid. Thank you.
Thank you. Any extended board member comment? Okay.
I want to make a quick correction to just. There's academic freedom, and there are also our board policies. So those things can exist at the same time. We have complaint procedures. If you believe that something does not comply with BUSD policies, and we can have academic freedom at the same time. Thanks.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.